The public that's in attendance, we thank staff that's in attendance. And we thank the council members that are here. Let's do a roll call vote. Make sure we can do business starting with Councilman Meacham.
Meacham present.
Summerhay is present.
Hayman present.
Plummer present.
So we have four of five, and I think Councilwoman Hurst will be coming in a few minutes. So, welcome everybody once again. Thanks for being here. Our first thing is our legislative prayer thought by Pastor Lauren Pankretz. We appreciate Pastor, he's from the Bridge Community Church. He's had a busy few weeks. I went to his stations, to the stations at the cross that the church did, and it was very well done, and we thank him for that and for what he had to our community. So Pastor Pankretz.
Well, thank you so much for letting me come. We, my family and I moved here in 2009 and started the Bridge Community, kind of over by the movie theater down there. Just an evangelical, non-denominational Christian church. And we have, we have just always loved it here so much. It's a, it's a beautiful place to live, and so I'm grateful to be able to just to pray with you guys this morning, or it's not morning anymore, but pray with you this evening and get our council started. I want to share just a scripture briefly. This is from the Proverbs, probably one you're familiar with. Says, "Where there is no guidance, a people falls; but in the abundance of counselors, there is safety." That's a great proverb to remind ourselves of why we as a city need each other and why you play such an important role, just in keeping, keeping things moving. Let me pray for you. Father, we thank you for your incredible love that you have for, for us, God, that you care about us, God. You know how many hairs are on our head. Lord, you, you are there with us and never far off, God. Say, "As we draw near you, you draw near to us." And so we thank you for that. We are grateful for this beautiful place that we have to live in, grateful for so many people who serve one another so well here, God. We're thankful for our first responders. We're grateful for these women who serve the city by offering their time and their counsel to guide the steps of our city, and we're, we're thankful for them, God. So we are blessed by that. We're thankful. But Lord, we also want to ask, God, that you would give them tremendous wisdom, Lord, that as they handle some things that are just routine and everyday and other things that are very big decisions, Lord, that in, in every case, God, your wisdom would guide them, that you would lead them in the city toward prosperity and justice and goodness, God, that this would be a place where, where, where lives can flourish. And so we are thankful for them, and we, we ask again, God, for you'd guide their steps and their deliberations, Lord, that you would be with them every step of the way. And we ask this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And thanks for mentioning Pastor Pankretz is a resident of our city. I've forgotten to mention that in my comments. And along with the LDS faith and Episcopal faith and our emergency response committee here, we try and work, work with everybody so we get to get as many, all the residents if we can within our city. So thank you. All right. If you'd all stand with me and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As always, the first thing we have is the open session. This is an opportunity for anybody to come forth and say what might be on their mind. We just ask you to be respectful and try and keep your comments to two to three minutes. Identify who you are and where you're from. We do have a couple of public hearing matters that you will not, don't need to come up to the microphone for this because you'll have your chance then. The fiscal year 2026 tentative budget and the public street and ride away vacation in the north portion of Rolling Hills Drive at 350 East Rolling Hills Drive. So those are the public hearings it looks like we have, so you can wait to comment on those then. But so that open session is now available. Let's again just state who you are and where you're from, if you're so inclined.
Can I go first?
Yes.
Hi. My name's Mark D. Whitaker, and I'll be attempting, oh, there you go. Hi, my name is Mark D. Whitaker, and I'll be attempting to become the state of Utah's governor. And I have an idea that I've thought about. It's called mechanical biodegradation. Now, what this is, quite simply, is taking landfills and just turning that all into dirt in the form of clay, sand, or topsoil. And what I propose here in the state of Utah is that we build this particular landfill that would be approximately 10 square miles. And I would like to see all of the state of Montana, all of the state of North Dakota, all of the state of South Dakota, and New Mexico in this 10-square-mile landfill. Now, I think we'd probably employ approximately 30,000 with approximately 315 people that I call biners. Now, what biners do is they separate things into the various elements, steel for steel, plastic for plastic, et cetera, and then wood for wood and so on. Now, as for paper and wood and cardboard, those things are basically one type of thing. But that's what a bidder would be doing. And so this product called mechanical biodegradation, it's a basic fundamental thing. You turn things from landfills and turn them into clay, sand, or topsoil. This is my own idea, and I hope that I can become governor of the state of Utah and be able to implement this. And I thank you for coming. God bless Centerville and God bless America. Amen.
Thank you, Mark. Any others for the open session?
Mayor, council, staff, fellow residents, over the past several months, I've heard from a lot of Centerville residents. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My name is Brian Plummer. I live at 898 South, 600 East, here in Centerville. I'm speaking as a resident tonight. That over the past several months, I've heard from many of our Centerville residents, people I deeply respect and who care about the future of our city. Their message to me has been clear. They are concerned about the direction we're heading and the growing cost of government. As it is budget season, let me speak directly to that. I do not support any new spending in the proposed budget until we identify real cuts. I do not support any new taxes or fee increases until we first demonstrate the discipline to live within our current means. I support a moratorium on all new government hiring. This is not a reflection on our current city staff. In fact, I fully support and appreciate the hardworking people that serve our city every day. But before we grow, we need to take a hard look at what we already have and what we're using and whether we are using our resources efficiently and effectively. As a city, we should not be pursuing new programs or policy shifts unless there is a clear grassroots support from our residents. That includes updates to the general plan and any initiative that would increase the scope or size of government without demonstrated, a demonstrated public mandate. I will continue to stand for limited accountable government, responsible budgeting, and respect for the people who pay the bills, the taxpayers of Centerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else on the open session? On these open sessions, there's things that will come forward that we could, we'll discuss in future meetings many time. For those of you, especially I see the Boy Scouts walking in. We're, by law, we need to notice things in advance, 40 hours in advance, to discuss. So we have the open sessions as a courtesy of the residents to see what may be on their mind, and there's good ideas that come forward from it that, that we will put on a future agenda at times. With citizen Brian Plummer, his, his things that he addressed happen to be on our agenda tonight. And we've, we've had them in the past with our budget retreat, and we'll have them for this, finally, in our final budget. But so that's why we do the open session, just because it's a chance for the residents to speak and say what's on their mind because it's obviously your city. So, thank you. Seeing that there's no other further open session comments, let's go to these presentations tonight. We have the Centerville City Youth Council Graduating Senior Recognition. Haley's coming up, and we have some of our council members present. We look forward to that as also, as well as a report from them on their U S U leadership conference. But let's do the graduating senior recognition first. Haley?
Fantastic. So here tonight, we have with us Eva Wright, Bridget Low, Cara Vornik, and Ella Stevens. Would you guys mind coming up? So in total, we do have seven graduating seniors. These are a few that came tonight. So we'd like to recognize them for their years of service on our youth council, serving our community and serving the youth council. And we do have Bridget, who was our youth mayor this past year, serving with us. Give us a wave. And so I've had the honor of getting to know these members through the past few years that they've been. They will be greatly missed. And we will be, we have had made for them custom pen and pencil sets. So we'll have their name on them with the Centerville logo, just a token of our appreciation. So as they go on to these bigger and better things in their lives, we hope they remember us and we got to take part in becoming a little bit of who they are. And then we will have them just kind of report while they're up here on the state conference that you as council support them going to. And we'd just like to hear one to two takeaways from you guys on what you got from that, those who attended. And I will also like to invite up Lindley as well. She is your junior this year, Lindley?
I'm a sophomore.
Your sophomore? And she served on our state board. So she got to help plan the entire conference that these youths attend every year. So it is two weekends in a row. She has to go to both. And then everything is youth-led, driven, and planned. So Lindley was on the board for that, so. And Ella was as well. Thank you, Ella. So they will kind of have a little bit of a deeper insight as well.
Hi, I'm Lindley Hernandez. I helped plan the state youth leadership conference. It was a lot of fun to be both on the state council and to actually be able to attend. It honestly was such an amazing experience to be able to be with all these people and plan it and meet new people from different councils. And I also, even though I was the one that like planned it, I feel like I learned a lot about leadership. And I feel like this conference is extremely beneficial and is something that we should continue to plan and fund because I honestly believe that it has made a difference in people's lives and that actually has taught them things. And I honestly really appreciate the opportunity to be able to be a part of something like that, being able to see all these people learning things that will help them in their everyday lives in the future, and also being able to, be able to maybe try to teach them some stuff. So it was a really great experience. Would recommend. So, thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Ella Stevens. I also served on the state board, and I feel like it's a really great opportunity for youth, being, just going and participating in the conference as well as helping plan it. For me, helping plan it was great to see all the things that go on behind the scenes to make sure everything runs smoothly and all the things you need to consider, especially having both weeks and seeing how it went differently with different groups and different amounts of people. And I also feel like for me, it was really nice getting more comfortable presenting in front of others, and I do think it's very, very beneficial for the youth.
Hi, my name's Eva Wright, and I've been on the council for two years, but this is my first year being able to attend the conference. And I'm so glad that I was able to attend before I graduated because I'd heard so many good things, but it honestly ended up being even better than I had expected. One, we, we got to listen to an amazing keynote speaker and go attend like a lot of breakout rooms and different leadership classes. And one of my favorite ones was like the networking classes. And I was able to meet with people who are involved with similar activities as me from places not close to here and not people I've ever met. And I think that is a really valuable skill that is gonna help me as I go off to college, and I'm really grateful that I could go.
I'm Cara Vornik, and what I really appreciate, appreciate about these conferences is like how they prepare us for our futures as youth. Something from past conferences that I've really learned to appreciate is my core values. That was taught, I think, two years ago at one of the conferences. And one of my core values that I've learned to take away from that is being involved and being connected with other, like my peers, and also adults that have more experience than me that I can learn from. And the conference is such a great way to have that kind of involvement and that kind of learning experience with connecting with those people. And so, yeah, I really love the conferences. Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name is Bridget Low. I've been a member of Centerville City Youth Council for three years, and I've had the honor of serving as mayor this year, which I've loved. Through the three years that I've been on the youth council, I've had the opportunity to attend, attend the state leadership conference each year. And my favorite thing about it is seeing how we take the lessons that we learn there and really implement them into our meetings and our planning sessions as the youth council. Every year, we plan a variety of events, and I see us taking the leadership skills that we learn. For example, I think a really important lesson that I learned this year was knowing, seeing the perspective in things and knowing what you're trying to gain from it. We did a scavenger hunt activity, and it was really important for our group to know what our goals were going into it, which allowed us to be more effective as a team. And I see the way that we take these lessons we learn and utilize them in our meetings, which makes it more effective so that we can continue to give back to the city. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, guys, for all your support of the youth council. Did you have anything else you wanted to hear from them while they were there?
Yeah, I want to ask of all of them, how many other cities were, were present the week that you went? And how many cities total in the week before too? Come, come up to the mic. And how many, Lindley, were, while Bryce is coming up, how many, how many were on the planning board with you?
It was me, there was 10 people total. Yeah.
There's five advisors. Each advisor gets two kids from their council to be on state board. I think the first week, there was 200 kids, and then the second week, there was almost 400 kids. I can't remember how many councils that is. It's quite a few.
At the, the end of the Saturday morning session, I don't know if I asked any of you, maybe I did, but I asked as many of you as could grab what, what you learned because I was hoping it would prepare you for this. So I was, I was glad that you guys actually brought up some specific examples of things that, because I think council appreciates that to know what they're spending their money on and what you are learning and how that helps, helps, helps you and helps the city.
I think the biggest disappointment they had this year was just not having the mayor and his wife there on Friday night for the dance. So, pretty incredible experience to be there with the mayor and his wife and.
Basically, bottom line, I was there, but they wanted my wife there, so. I could, I could have stayed home and just had her. So, and she, she was really sad to miss. She came home and said, "I should have gone up there with you." So, it, it, it was, it was a neat experience.
She wants a commitment from Janie for next year.
Any council, any questions for any of them? Thank you, youth council. Thank you not only for this event, but we've tried to report throughout the year with through Haley and Bryce of other things that you've done. We talked about your legislative day on the Hill and some other things you've done. Thank you for being there at our Christmas party and our Easter kickoff and other things you're at as well, too. So you graduated seniors, don't forget Centerville, okay? Don't get out there in the world and forget your hometown, okay? Because going to your roots is pretty critical. So, thank you. Anything else?
Give them a round of applause for everything.
All right, wonderful. Let's go to the Professional Development Academy graduate presentations. Bryce, our King or Administrative Services Director, has a couple of these to present.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. Just to backflow that, we did get nine new applicants for youth councils, so we're back up to 33. So, pretty awesome to see that, that it's growing. Yeah, so thank you for this opportunity. The Professional Development Academy is kind of one of those opportunities I have to kind of help facilitate for the city. This is an academy that is facilitated through the International City Managers Association. And Brant and I felt like it's a great impact for our employees to kind of get a little extra opportunity to kind of meet different people throughout the country in a more professional setting and talk about different topics in relates to leadership. This, this conference is based upon Colin Powell's book that he wrote about leadership and kind of follows that model. And then they go through a 12-week process with different assignments and exam, not exams, assignments and activities and networking opportunities and whatnot. We had four people go through, Jace, whether it be who couldn't be here tonight, and Ron Wright, who couldn't be here tonight, and then Jeremy Brown and Lisa Bednarz. This is the first time we had the opportunity to send somebody through their cybersecurity leadership training, which is just cybersecurity professionals. So that's pretty exciting. I'm hoping that Lisa will be able to shed some light on how much of an impact that was on her and her development. So I will let Lisa come up, and I'll give this to her. Thank you. And then I'll have Jeremy come up. I'll let each of you hug the podium right here, and you can take a turn, kind of giving a little intro of what you thought was the most beneficial.
I'll bring it home, people.
Well, like you said, it was a 12-week course, and there was a lot covered that I, I thought was very good for leadership. A lot of it was focused on business, so I had to find what would best apply to the police department because we're not a profit-based organization. So there were some things that didn't necessarily apply, but most of it did. And the best things that I found were focused on positive relationships because being a police officer can easily be a very negative job. The calls we go on are, are hard, and we face a lot of negativity. And sometimes that's just a constant battle that we're fighting. There's a lot of mental health issues in this profession. So I, I like that they talked about positive relationships. Leaders foster positive relationships with trust, respect, and kindness. They talked about positive communication. There, we struggle with a lot of negativity and negative comments down there, and that, that impacts the climate of the workplace, definitely. And that's something that we need to work on. And the relationships and the communication affect the climate and affect the way that people feel at work. And then having a positive meeting, everybody wants to feel valued while they're at work. Everyone's, everybody wants to feel like their efforts matter. And sometimes in the police world, it's easy to feel cynical and feel like what we do doesn't make a difference when we work really hard to arrest someone for something, and then they just immediately get released from jail or charges get dropped, and we feel like we're, we're wasting our time. Sometimes we, we can start to feel a little cynical, like we're wasting our time and what we do doesn't matter. But it's important to remember that we do, we do make a difference out there. We help people with, with their lives. And so it's important, it's important for me as a leader to, to help all the officers remember that what they're doing matters and, and is impacting people's lives in positive ways. So those are the important things that I, that I got out of it. Lisa?
So mine was a little bit different, as they mentioned that it was cybersecurity-based. So that was kind of fun, being in a study group with people that are in the same career as I am. They were mostly all, you know, either county or city government employees as well, with a couple private businesses. He's absolutely right. Like, I followed the same thing as the Colin Powell book and everything, but even he, you know, aimed things more towards the same concepts of leaderships in that the positive relationships is like super important for, for IT people to, you know, get to know basically everybody. I need to get to know all of you. I need to get to know every, everybody in the department who relies on me for help. It could be a time when I need your help, you know, if we have some sort of catastrophic incident or whatever. The employees, you know, if we have a good relationship, they're more inclined to reach out and help, or, you know, if I ask them to do something on their computer, they might, you know, comply a little bit more easily. And if anything, like things go south, we, we have that type of thing happen in this city. And you just like never know. And so as far as what I got from the course itself, it was a lot of things along that lines. And, but what I got from my study group was a lot of interesting things because these people come from larger IT departments and things, and they have different policies. So I was able to get some information on some good ways to do things. And one of, one of it is trying to implement a policy where IT is on the ground floor of every discussion that has to do with IT. If it's a new system for Public Works that's technology-related, if it's a new cemetery program, whatever it is, I need to be there from the beginning because I will have the questions that are important for our security posture, cyber or otherwise, for compatibility in our systems. And maybe we have something else in place already that might take care of that, such as like our lock system. We have two different lock systems in the, in the city. Public Works has one, and I have one. Ours is better. It would have been nice, you know, to implement that into one system that's easily maintained, but that hasn't happened so far, but hopefully one day. But anyway, I'm off the topic, and that wasn't planned. But I did learn a lot from this and, you know, hope to implement a lot of my new knowledge into my day-to-day activities. And I appreciate being sent to it. It was good. Okay?
A question for them all. I think since they are graduates from the Professional Development Academy, that we should give them a round of applause. Thank you, you two, and the other two that attended as well. And thanks, Bryce, for your introduction there. All right, let's go to the South Davis Recreation District update. We have Tiff Miller here from the South Davis Recreation District, the executive director. I'll let you introduce yourself more, Tiff. But thank you for being here.
Oh, for sure. Thanks for having me. And I apologize if I keep taking my glasses off and on. I'm starting to lose my vision. So I can, I cannot, I have to have them for a close-up, but I can't see you far away, so I will periodically.
Probably lost his eyesight over the last three years, given the budget torment the current board has put on.
Staring at computers, for sure. No, just wanted to come and talk about the district. And I've been at the district now since 20, since 2018. So I've, I've been there since, well, during COVID and through that time. But I wanted to talk about mostly 2024 and how things went last year and then also talk about some, some of the things that have gone on so far in the first quarter of 2025. Talk about some of the programs we've got going on, some of the things that, some of the numbers that we have, and trying to. of the numbers that we have, and try to also show that, uh, how, how, how much Centerville is participating in the district, and give you an idea of, uh, the, the many opportunities that we have for Centerville residents to, to be benefited by what we, we, uh, have with the South Davis Recreation District. But first, just, uh, twenty-twenty-four was a great year for us. Um, we saw a number of important steps taking place throughout the year, um, including our new budgeting process, as, as Spencer mentioned, uh, we spent a lot of time with that over the, over the course of the year. Um, it's been a very beneficial thing for us over the last, uh, year and a half. Um, we also incorporated new mental wellness programs through our Nedleys and, uh, Sky Breath programs. Um, our annual memberships continue to grow, um, especially since COVID and the, the, the slowing down that, that situation caused for our memberships. Um, we changed, we made changes to our board, we no longer have eight members on the board, we have seven. Um, that was changed last year, so we now have seven members on the board, and the two at large are now selected from our current board, as opposed from the county commissioners. So we made a lot of changes last year, and we've made some good, uh, updates for this year as well. Um, so we, we have, um, this is, we were waiting on our final numbers, we finished that this week, um, so our audited numbers are really good, um, really excited about twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-twenty-five was looking great as well through the first quarter, and I'll talk about some of those things, um, but we're just looking forward to bringing, uh, new opportunities, and opportunities that we've been, we've been providing for years to the residents, and, uh, hopefully things will continue to, to, to grow and be great, uh, into the future. So, um, working with Centerville, some of the topics to talk about, working with Centerville, I know we worked together on a lot of different things, especially, um, field space over at a, a Centerville, uh, Centerville Park, so utilizing that space for some of our programs, some SDR updates that we have, some program numbers, and some district highlights, uh, will be presented in this presentation, so. But the first I want to talk about was, is Centerville and S, in the South Davis Recreation District. So, um, I, I think it was twenty-eighteen, um, Centerville worked with the district to help build those fields, uh, at Centerville Community Park, um, and I think it, what's, what's been there is wonderful. I think it's been a, a wonderful park for everybody, um, and the add-on that was added as part of that project in twenty-eighteen for soccer fields has been a huge benefit for us. Um, we provided a lot of soccer, uh, youth soccer teams and youth soccer programs to utilize those fields over the last few years, um, and we've been very, we're very, uh, thankful for that opportunity to be able to use those fields. Um, and it's, it's, I know we're in the, the, the talks about, uh, that, that future and how utilizing those fields will continue on going forward, and, uh, we look forward to having those conversations and continuing that process, but just know that we are very thankful, um, and I, I don't know that we can express how much, uh, and how much, how beneficial those fields are for our programs. Um, we utilize a lot of different fields in, in gyms within the, the district, um, some fields for baseball, some fields for soccer, flag football, whether it's the school district or other municipalities, but we're just so very, very thankful for the, to be able, the ability to work together and, uh, continuing to work, uh, as a district where we don't have very much facilities when it comes to outdoor stuff. Uh, we don't have any field space, we don't have those opportunities, and being able to work with you guys and work with other cities and municipalities and the school district has really been a big, big, uh, big help for us. Some of the things, just looking into the future, um, looking at other ways that we can collaborate, maybe there's events that we can work together on, finding things that we can do together, um, with especially maybe even like the Fourth of July celebration, ways that we can help promote that, and help, help work with you guys to make that even a better, uh, uh, um, day than it already is. I mean, I'll do such a great job with that, and we're looking forward to being in the parade again this year. Um, it's something that we enjoy doing every year, it's, it's a way for us to get out into the community and, uh, be part of that, and, and we really enjoy that. Um, into the future, uh, there are some things that we're looking at, I mean, there's obviously things that we want to do at the rec center, um, in the future, we don't, we don't have any current plans for those types of things, but those are things that we're continuing to keep an eye on and see how those might turn, uh, pan out. Our current bond, uh, it, uh, expires in January of twenty-twenty-six, so who knows what that future might hold? There may be opportunities, we haven't gotten to, to that point yet, um, but there are projects at the facility, things that we're looking at to make, make the facility better, whether it's additional restrooms, whether it's better access points for those who have ADA issues or things like that, and making it a little bit more secure for people that are coming in and exiting through our, our current, uh, north doors of the facility. So, we have different opportunities there, and we're, we're trying to find ways, pool space, I guess I should have mentioned that, but we're working with the school district, talking to them about those types of things. So, there's, there's future opportunities there, and, uh, just wanted to touch on those and just make sure that, um, just show how appreciative we are for the, for Centerville, as well as letting you know that there's opportunities that maybe there, that we can work together in the future. Um, going on to the next slide, uh, we did in this year, we introduced a new website, which I think's been beneficial for us, um, and we all launched that in February. Um, it's through a company called Streamline, whose sole focus is on special districts, so, um, they build special district websites, um, they've done ours, obviously, um, Kern's Oakwood Park, as well as, uh, Cottonwood Heights, so those are three of the examples that they've done, uh, just in, in our area, um, but they do special districts only, special districts, um, exclusively. Um, so the updates have, it's been such a better experience for mobile users, um, our old website was not a good experience for mobile users, users, so it's been better for everybody, better easier to find, it's easier to find information, or it's easier for us in, in helping to get information onto the website, so it's been a, it's been a, been a big benefit for us and a big help trying to get that information out to the community. Um, so, we're, I encourage you to go check out our website, and if you're looking for programs, and if you have questions or there's things we can continue to improve, let us know, so we can make sure we make those changes. Twenty-twenty-four financial update, so, um, as I mentioned, our audit was just completed this week, um, we ended up, uh, bringing in about four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-four. Um, it's great numbers for us, uh, especially post-COVID, where we were seeing numbers that were harder, harder to get back to our numbers with our memberships, um, program numbers especially started off slow after COVID, but now they've continued to grow, and we're looking forward to twenty-twenty-five continuing to be, uh, even better. Um, we saw steady increases in our annual passes, twenty-eight thousand more visitors in twenty-twenty-four, which is great, and so far, we're even up, uh, more in twenty-twenty-five. Um, we've mentioned the new budget process, so that new budget process has allowed us to really look to, to look at our, our programs and sort of narrow down those programs that may need some adjustments, whether or not they are adjusting program, uh, fees, whether or not adjusting our, our staffing, or in the future, whether or not we don't, we, we provide those programs or not. So we're looking at all the different opportunities there, um, by analyzing the, the information that we get from that budget, and it's been a, it's, it took some time, as Spencer noted, but, um, it was, it was, it's going to be, I think, going forward, something that benefits us, to help us make better decisions and look at it a little bit, uh, easily, more easily, um, going forward. We are still continuing to see some issues, um, when it comes to increased expenses, especially things that we can't control. Um, our utilities continue to rise, our insurance continues to rise, um, and maintenance expenses, we operate a pool, we operate an ice rink, those expenses, um, to us, keep rising, so it's not that we're utilizing things more necessarily, just those costs continue to grow. Um, we saw a lot of pool expenses grow through the use of, uh, chemicals to keep the pool, um, clean and things like that over the last few years. Our utilities continue to grow, um, uh, our power has increased in percentages, uh, the last couple of years, and I think will go up again this year, uh, same with our water, so, we're continuing, continuing to see those increases, but overall, I think we're seeing great strides on the fees and the revenues side that are making changes and making the district, uh, more successful. Um, I mentioned twenty-twenty-five first quarter, so, let's give you some numbers there, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars higher already for our annual pass sales, um, through the first quarter, so that is, that is great numbers there. Our daily emissions are up more than twelve-point-seven thousand dollars, and our monthly EFTs are up two, two-point-five thousand dollars, so we're seeing great numbers in that first quarter. We saw, um, junior jazz participation, we saw over two-hundred more participants in our winter session, which is great, I mean, we'll, as I show you in a little bit, that's a lot of those were increased, uh, from Centerville residents, so great numbers there, uh, additional over twenty-five thousand dollars in sales from just, uh, increasing our, our junior jazz program. Spring sports are up, we're, three-hundred-and-thirty-five participants, mostly in our flag football, where we added and grew that program there, so we're trying to see if we can continue to do that going forward, it's working well so far, um, and we're excited about that. Swim lessons, hundred-and-sixty more participants in the first quarter, so we're seeing great numbers, we're seeing things continue to grow, we're seeing, um, our programs continue to look, uh, look great, and the residents continuing to utilize them, and we're looking forward to the rest of the year and seeing what that second, third, and fourth quarters look like. Um, I mentioned the future projects a little bit already, but, um, one of the things coming up that I've actually been meeting with, with Bountiful City is our parking lot, um, it's never been redone since we opened, so that's eighteen years now, so we're looking at that probably in twenty-twenty-seven, and working with them to see how we can best do that in the next couple of years. Um, that roof membrane, that doesn't sound that, that great, but, uh, it is a very expensive replacement, and that's something that will have to happen probably the next three to four years. So, we're, we're seeing a lot of big projects, our capital projects continue to, uh, be lined out over the next ten years, and the, the roof membrane is a, is a project that will take place, I think we're looking at twenty-twenty-eight at this point, so, um, looking at big projects, we're also looking at, uh, making sure that we're keeping the facility working and, and in good working condition for the future, because we want to be here for more than eighteen years, we want to be there as long as we possibly can. Um, and last thing on the updates, we did incorporate a new sponsorship package, uh, this past year, so I've got, and talks with some people about hopefully getting some sponsorships coming up. We currently have our ice rink closed, um, to do some projects and maintenance, um, and we're hoping when we come back, we'll have some new sponsorships to show on those dashboards, we're getting new dashboards as well, so, um, it's always fun when you're shutting down the ice rink and trying to melt the ice, luckily, it's already melted, so that's great. Um, it only took a couple of days, which it usually takes a little bit longer, so, if we can get everything done a little bit more quickly, we'll open more, more soon than we, we expected to be, so, we're looking forward to that as well. Um, so, looking at program numbers for twenty-twenty-five, um, we've got, we've got, um, upcoming and current programs, membership information, um, Centerville District comparison, so looking at how the programs for Centerville align for all the different, uh, numbers that we have there, and our program updates, so, uh, just wanted to touch on, um, some of our upcoming and current programs, right now, we're registering for our summer programs, so that incorporates our, our tennis, pickleball, um, sports and fitness camps that we've been doing for a number of years, and then, um, we're also doing summer baseball, um, which is really just T-ball and coach pitch, uh, which we've always done over the last, like, probably forever, um, but we're, we've got great registration numbers going so far for that. Um, we're already at budget for our revenues for our, our summer, our summer baseball, and we're pretty close with pickleball, and we're going to hopefully see some continued growth there for tennis and, and sports and fitness, but those will continue to go throughout the entire summer, so we have plenty of time to continue to grow and get those numbers higher, but, um, some other programs, we have our summer swim lessons, um, uh, just a, a plug for swim lessons, I think they're very important for a community, uh, learning how to swim is one of the most important things, I think, that if the youth can do, um, if, and I think seeing the number of people that drown on a year-to-year basis is, is very disheartening, and so we have opportunities at our facility for swim lessons, and if there are people that need help, we can try to find people that can, uh, find ways to help them as well in those programs, but swim lessons are starting, uh, they started this week for registration, and we're looking forward to starting those up in June. Um, one thing we've added more of is stick-and-puck hockey times, um, we added four additional sessions than we had before, um, that's some in early mornings and some in the afternoons for different times, uh, for different people that have different needs, so we're excited about that once the ice rink opens back up again. So going to membership updates, um, we did incorporate some price changes, very minor for twenty-twenty-five, so we increased all of our passes by ten dollars. Um, as I mentioned, our, our revenue was up, and our numbers of passes are up as well. Um, so, right now, we're looking at, uh, like I said, twenty-six thousand dollars in additional revenue for the first quarter, so, I mean, it's, it's great numbers, and we're, we're excited about our, our memberships, I don't think anybody could probably read that, um, but I'll give you an idea of what it looks like, uh, for total and for Centerville. So our total residents through the first quarter were, or passes were six, uh, seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five memberships, which represented eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-four residents in, say, in South Davis County. So, so for Centerville, that means nineteen percent of our passes are first, from Centerville residents, and twenty percent of our members, and just to give you an idea, um, how many members that is, that's three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-two members from Centerville, um, fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-three memberships, so which is twenty-two-point-seven percent roughly, twenty-two percent of Centerville residents are members of the South Davis Recreation District. So, we're excited about that, and we want to continue to see that and that grow, and opportunities grow there, so, um, insurance passes, um, if you don't know, we do, uh, utilize insurance passes for the district, so through Silver Sneakers, um, Silver and Fit, we also have another, um, another, uh, organization that does, uh, insurance passes for us, so that's a great opportunity for us and for residents that maybe qualify for those passes, so they can come in and they, they utilize the facility, and the number of, uh, times they come, we get a, we get a certain amount of money back for the number of, so it works out well for those, uh, seniors that are typically the, the ones that are utilizing those passes, um, and it's good for us as well, because it gets, um, people to our facility to enjoy our programs, a lot of the, the water aerobics, Silver Sneakers types classes, uh, that are offered through the, through the rec facility. Um, annual pass sales growth, like I said, continues to grow, and we're looking forward to that. Um, if you go to the next slide, junior jazz basketball, so I talked about that a little bit already, but as you can see, our revenue for winter twenty-twenty-four was seventy-nine-thousand-five-hundred, this past year was hundred-and-four-thousand-five-hundred, so we'd incorporated some more, um, programs that we had typically not always done at the, in the winter programs, so we've utilized more facilities, um, we're utilizing more, uh, elementary schools, which is not great for the viewing experience necessarily, but it is good for getting opportunities for people to go in and have more space to participate, because junior jazz is one of our programs that we typically turn away a lot of people, just because we've had, haven't had the space in the past. So we're still turning away some people, but we're trying to find more ways to, to include them and have opportunities for them. Um, our total participation was one-thousand-thirty-nine in twenty-twenty-four and twelve-twenty-three this past winter. Um, for Centerville, that means that we had, um, one-hundred-and-thirty-four participants in twenty-twenty-four, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven for twenty-twenty-five, so we're seeing about a fifteen-point-nine percent, uh, of total participation and twenty-two-point-seven percent increase from twenty-twenty-four, so great numbers there. Um, junior jazz program's one of our biggest programs and one of the biggest junior jazz programs in the state of Utah, so, um, something that we're really proud of. Um, Haley does, Haley used to work for us, she's a big part of how our program is successful, so, uh, shout out to Haley, um, well, for all these programs in general, basically, but, um, youth soccer twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. So, what we've seen across all of our programs are big numbers and in big increases, so, um, we saw about ten thousand dollars more in revenue for this year than last year for the spring, about sixty more participants, one-hundred-and-thirty-five of those participants came from Centerville, um, in twenty-twenty-four, and one-hundred-and-fifty-nine in twenty-twenty-five, so seventeen percent of total participants and fifteen-point-one percent increase from twenty-twenty-four. So we're continuing, continuing to see the programs grow, and we're continuing to see more participants from Centerville as well. Youth volleyball, um, revenues are up about three thousand dollars this year, um, participation, about forty more residents, uh, or forty more participants, fifty-one participants from Centerville last year, did go down for some reason this year, I'm not sure why, but, uh, we're looking forward to continuing to see that grow in the future. Um, volleyball is one of our growing programs, and it's one of the things that we continue to want to see, uh, get it, get more, uh, exposure, um, especially now that the, the boys are now playing volleyball, too, so we're hoping to see more participation from girls and boys as we grow that program into the future. We do that in the fall and the spring, along with these other sports that we've mentioned as well. Flag football, uh, we saw, uh, fifteen thousand dollars in revenue, expense, uh, growth this year, um, a lot of that was we added another day of, of, of games, we also grew our programs and have a lot of interest in flag football. Um, so, in twenty-twenty-four, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight residents or participants, six-hundred-and-thirty-four this year, so great numbers there. Saw forty participants from Centerville and fifty-one, um, from, for this year. I think part of, uh, the, the participation is that some Centerville residents may go up to Farmington, because it's so close in some aspects, but I think it's, uh, it's great to see that growth there, twenty-one-point-six percent increase in participation from twenty-twenty-four. And I'll, I'll, I'll talk about baseball, you'll do, you're, you're doing, you're doing your own baseball, but we do see some Centerville residents, uh, so we saw twelve more this year, we had nine last year, so we had twenty-one this year, so, uh, we are seeing some increase there, but overall, the program grew in twenty-twenty-five from last year, so, across the board, we're seeing great participation in our programming. Um, in our swim lessons, we had four-hundred-and-ninety-seven participants in twenty-twenty-four from Centerville, um, and we're seeing, we've already probably got over two-hundred for, uh, twenty-twenty-five, so, as I mentioned, swim lessons are super important for us, and something that I hope we continue to see grow and grow, um, throughout the district. Um, so to wrap up, just, uh, some district highlights, I, I touched on the mentally, the mental wellness that we've talked about, the Dr. Nedley Program that we, we've started to do over the last couple of years, started off here with Centerville Cares, I believe, that, that program. Started off here with Centerville Cares, I believe, that program, and we've tried to help grow that into the community. Had great participation last year, so we're hoping that will continue to grow and continue to get utilized. We also incorporate the Sky Breath for the kids and the teens. That's a little bit different from that other program, but overall, hoping to get some mental wellness there, helping people to find that, you can't always just be physically fit, you also need some mental fitness as well to help you through tough times, different challenges you may have in your life, or maybe just finding ways to help you relax and find that quiet peace in your own life. As I mentioned before, 28,000 more residents in 2024, 8,000 so far in 2025. We have a new Zamboni coming in this month. We're kissing up to the new hockey club by making the Zamboni the color of the hockey club, so hopefully we can get a little bit of a communication and cooperation for those guys going forward. We're making some changes during this project in the ice. We're making some new changes with turnstiles going into the ice arena. Those will be installed in the next few weeks, and we're excited about that. And as you all know, hockey is growing in Utah. We're trying to get more conversations going with hockey. We talked about more stick-and-pucks. We're getting a lot more requests for hockey in the community, and we have one ice sheet, a lot of communities have two, like in Weber County and Provo, but we're doing the best we can with what we have, and hopefully in the future that we'll continue to see that continue to grow. I mean, hockey is a great revenue source for us. We utilize the ice also for figure skating, for our Learn to Skate classes and just public skating as well. So hockey is going to continue to grow, and then we have the Olympics, what, 10 years from now or so? So that will also be something that we'll continue to see more ice desired to be rented from us. So overall, just excited about 2025 after 2024, great numbers, and we're excited about what the future holds. And with that, I'd be open to entertaining any questions that you may have, and if there's anything I could help answer from my presentation or not, or something else. Talked a lot, so.
Questions for Tiff?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the South Davis Rec Center and all you guys do down there. I appreciate all of those programs that you've been talking about. My kids participate in them, and they've gained a lot from them, so I appreciate them.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Do you still rent out the building to like high school graduations?
We do, yeah. So we'll rent those typically on Fridays and Saturday nights, so we have those opportunities on the weekends. Every year, we rent out to the same Bountiful Stake YSA. They rent it out every year for New Year's. So there's also a number of other groups. They come in and just do it for either a company group, a company party, whatever it might be. We also have other opportunities for smaller, shorter time periods on Saturdays from 7:00 to 9:00 that you can rent the facility, or rent the pools to come in. We do see a lot of people wanting the pool space from that time period on Saturdays in the evenings, so.
Tiff doesn't mention it, me and it, I've talked about it a little bit, but it was, it's been a challenge the last two, three years, and I feel like staff and the board are in a great place now. Change. I think Tiff's done a great job. It was stressful for all of us, I think, and he, like I said, we just got our audit report, we'll review it in our Monday meeting, but it's really encouraging as we've really gotten granular on all the programming, on all of our costs, all of our revenues, and to see that turnaround's been really great.
Yeah, come check out the ice with the new dashboards if you'd like to go skating, and check out the new Zamboni in the next few weeks, like I said.
What do cities have to pay to get their logo on the dashboards?
We have different options, so if you go to our website, there's a sponsorship opportunities there, but if you want to, but no, we can talk about other opportunities as well. But no, we, like I said, we are kissing up to the hockey club, so whatever their team name will be, whatever, I think that sounds like they leaked it or something, but yeah, we're looking forward to it when the ice gets back up and running in the next few weeks.
Thanks, Tiff.
Yeah, if you ever have questions at any time, feel free to reach out to me.
Yeah, appreciate you coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tiff.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so let's go to the business items. Item number one is public hearing on the fiscal 2026 tentative budget. In the background, hopefully you read that, State Law and Cars Budget Officer, City Managers submit the proposed budget for the next fiscal year to the City Council by the first regular City Council meeting in May. The council is to adopt the tentative budget and schedule a public hearing date to receive comments before adopting the final budget. The city manager recommends the City Council adopt the proposed budget as a tentative budget with the understanding that the council may not ultimately agree with all the details and commend it before adopting the final budget. So this is adopting the tentative budget. As I said in the work session, I do want you to bring your concerns forth. We may not come down to dollar amounts to deny it if we're talking about some changes we, before we adopt the final budget, we could look to have a follow-up budget meeting if we need to do that as well too, but.
I don't know if anybody else feels the same, or you feel it, but we have, is there any reason why we maybe push that maybe next on our agenda, just because of a couple of other people or?
I'm happy to go this, but I'm wondering if this might be, I might be wondering if we might go longer, because we've got a lot of questions.
I appreciate the council summary, because of course, Tiff stood up, I thought maybe a couple of these others we should move in front.
I'm happy to keep the agenda the same, I don't want to.
No, I appreciate, we, Mike was so deep into it, I'm like, maybe it's too late to interrupt him, but we were thinking the same thing.
I just forgot, of course, Tiff, so.
I'm not trying to circumvent.
What I was looking at was maybe doing two and three before one, is that fair enough?
That'd be great.
Does that sound good? Okay, so with that great introduction, we are going to go to the public hearing in the Public Street and Rideaway Vacation on the north portion of Rolling Hills Drive, 350 East, Rolling Hills Drive, and get Mike up here out of his deep sleep back there. So we appreciate those that are here for these next two or three, and you're probably appreciative too that you get to go home a bit earlier, probably. So, all right, Mike, take it away on that Public Street and Rideaway Vacation.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant on this is intelligence engineering. And the property owner, Mark Leon, is online as well through Zoom, so he is participating. The applicant actually lives in Hawaii, but he's very aware of what's going on with his property. This is a request that's been requested in tandem with the subdivision, minor subdivision application for the area. Some of you may be familiar, it's the Jensen property up at the top of Rolling Hills. Rolling Hills is at one point Phase H, I believe, and the intent is to move forward with that subdivision plot. We have been working with the applicant group within the DRC and with staff to get that refined. As you may recall, the code update back in January of last year moved it where minor subdivisions go through solely the DRC and then ultimately the zoning administrative is the approval, that is the process for the subdivision. That being said, there is a vacation element to this, where they're right away up at the top of Rolling Hills off of 350. It's a T, it's a dead-end T. One goes down to where the subdivision plot should have been had it gone forward 20, 30 years ago. The other goes up towards, I believe it's not the Haddads, but up to like Firebreak Road in those areas up there. So anyway, the intent from the applicant, per direction actually of the city staff, specifically the road supervisor and the public works director, assistant public works director is looking at the vacation that is found in your packet. So the vacation request is for the Public Street in the Rideaway that's on the northern end of that T-point where 350 meets that little Rolling Hills dead-end area. Yeah, you can see it on there. So the curved area that's shaded off is the area, in fact, that's being requested to be vacated. And then the thought process would be that that would be connected to future Lot 1. And then the question may then become, well, what is the city getting out of this? Well, down lower on Lot 2, there's actually another cul-de-sac bulb that's needing to be added. Some of you may be familiar, down on that far north end of Rolling Hills Drive, it just, the road just stops into dirt. And oftentimes, Public Works has had issues with gravel and rocks and mud and water coming off of this property down that street. And I do have another image in there, Cindy, I'm not sure it's.
Down meaning north.
North, correct, correct.
Where Rolling Hills goes from north down.
Yeah, it's a Rolling Hills subdivision site plan, I believe is the document that shows that. So what the intent would be is for the city to terminate the T-arm to the north of 350, turn it into more of a quasi cul-de-sac or knuckle, as you can see in that image, and then the subdivision requirement is to have that other cul-de-sac on that north end. And so for the purposes of tonight's hearing, the applicant is requesting that vacation. Now, to the requirement of state code, the vacation does require that they send out a letter of notice to all utility or potential utility providers, which they have done. They prepared a form letter. You can see there's indication of that notification that was mailed out to all of them through the postal office, and those have been serviced. I believe the majority, if not all of them, signed off on receipt of that. And then we have received multiple letters of consent, approval, or other commentary. The one letter I would note from the South Davis Sewer District, they have requested that there be a small addendum to include an easement that goes on to the future private property were it to be vacated for their line that's currently in place in a storm drain or a sewer box. So that I have noted in the recommendation is an item to consider were there to be approval for said vacation. All the other commentaries of consent support, there were no concerns or no issues noted. The public hearing was advertised correctly. We have put the sign up on the property, met all the obligations for the vacation notification, and also there is a notification requirement where property owners within 300 feet are notified. We have sent out that specific notification to those property owners. And so there were seven, I believe there were five, four residences, one private property owner, the Weaver Basin Water District, and then the property owner itself. So, and then all the affected entities were also notified of this public hearing this evening in accordance with the requirement. So we feel like if you look at the actual staff report itself, we feel like, language, so I can coin it correctly. I'm just going to read the last paragraph. City staff are of the opinion that vacating the Public Street and Rideaway easement would be assigned to the utility companies, and future recording of the proposed Rolling Hills subdivision plot H is in the best interest of the city, and there is good cause for the requested street and rideaway vacation. City staff therefore is recommending consideration of approval for this proposed public street and rideaway vacation with conditions as outlined below in the suggested motion, one of which, which is very key to note, is that obviously the vacation be recorded with any future plat recording, so that the vacation can't occur or be finalized until the plat is ready to be recorded and finalized with that. So basically, the vacation documentation would be put on hold until such time that the plat was signed off and the miler was finalized and sent off and ready to record. So, and you can look at, there's other stipulations on page, or conditions on page four of the transmittal report, there's items one through seven. If you have any specific questions about any of the others there, and let me know, but it's basically just verifying that all the documentations are reflective of what they need to be in their most perfect form, based upon review and approval of the city engineer, the city attorney, and city staff commentary, and then the other items noted. So, and then the conditions, or excuse me, the findings reflect the things that I just read about findings of good cause, no material injury to any person or other public interest, no impact to neighboring property owners or residents of the city that would be negative or detrimental, and then continuation of the continuous neighboring properties and property development as permitted, so by the city code. So with that, I think that hopefully covers everything, but happy to answer questions or obviously, Mayor, how you want to proceed with the public hearing. If you'd like to do that, have me come back up for questions, I'm good with that too.
First thing we do is, yes, any questions for you before let the applicant present if they want to. So questions on this issue with Mike right now, realizing you may come back at the public hearing as well. More questions?
I have a question or two. Do we know, do you know what the market value is for this right away?
I don't know, I had that thought, obviously. I talked to the Public Works Department about that very question, because I figured it might come up. When I talked to Dave Walker, what the city is getting back for the new cul-de-sac bulb down at the bottom on the north end is more than adequate, you said, to cover the cost of the rideaway, but to your specific answer about value, I'm not sure how to do evaluation on that, so I wouldn't know what the specific value is. But the feeling from the Public Works Department was it was more than equitable with the addition of that new bulb and all of the curb gutter sidewalk improvement on that, and utility alignments that would be within that.
I also noticed that Firebreak Road runs very close to this property. What's development going to be like, and how's that going to affect the slope and those types of things as we start looking at our Firebreak Road there?
Yeah, so the, on the property in particular, and I have to be a little careful, because obviously subdivision is separate from this process, but as we've been looking at the subdivision request for the minor subdivision, there's a lot of undevelopable slope. Angle of the slope along the actual property that's being looked at to be developed is more than 25%, and so it's not developable, and that continues that current non-developable space. You can see the jagged area, basically that jagged area on that drawing, I know it's kind of a crude area, but that upper eastern jagged area is where that non-developable area is. And you can see it continues on like that as it goes past the south cul-de-sac. So I guess to answer your question, with that slope being so aggressive, it makes it really difficult to develop at that Firebreak Road or below to the west.
Well, what's the purpose of the vacation and moving forward with the?
The properties that you see there that are, there are areas that are developable, it's there, it's kind of crosshatched below the jagged line. Those are actually developable paths that would be part of Lot 1 and Lot 2.
And that's on the north side?
It's west of that jagged edge, so the map is actually reflecting eastward, and then north is to your left, and south is to your right, and down is to your west.
Yeah, the north arrow is incorrect.
Oh, is the north arrow on the flat on the wrong?
I'm having trouble kind of orienting myself on this.
North is actually left of the drawing.
Yeah, east is, east is up on that drawing.
So just a comment on the value of the land being, the street being vacated. So if the street vacation is provided to the city by plat, we only own a fee simple determinable, meaning that if we don't use it as a right-of-way, then it just reverts back to the adjoining property owners. If we acquired it by some other way, like, you know, the Townsite Act or something else, then, and we might actually own fee simple. In some cases, we have where we say, okay, now you have to pay us for it. So if I'm 100 north, we had to do that and say, well, you know, we own this outright, so you need to pay for it. But this is not one of those, so it will revert to the adjoining property owners, which happens to be the same owner in, because it's all Lot 1.
But Mike, my question is, this will be a minor subdivision which stays at a plan of commission level.
It doesn't even go to plan of commission, stays with staff.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, it's just administrative approval, right? And I don't know that the applicant, actually, the applicant doesn't have to answer this question, or the owner, but it looks like they own three fairly large parcels that are identified on some of these drawings. Is there an intent that some future point that Rolling Hills will be completely developed and be tied in together cohesively, and then parcels along it create a larger plan? Are you saying that?
That's it, it's two lots, that's it.
Because of the grade.
Because it's too difficult to develop otherwise. They've tried, as some of you may be aware, throughout the last 15, 20 years to develop this as an eight-lot subdivision and as a three-lot and different variations, and it's never worked out because of the slope and the grade, and then the encumbrances of utilities actually run through the best developable flat land.
Right.
There's key utilities of the city in there, so the developable real estate is very, very minute, unfortunately. Even though the real estate looks large on paper, those slopes make it very difficult to develop more than two lots.
Thank you. But I've also seen developments happen on very steep inclines.
Yeah.
Is this basically what we're doing is creating an opportunity for later down the road?
The vacation alone is, has no, I would say the vacation alone doesn't really address your question. The vacation in the rideaway that's being established here only allows for the two lots to be developed. As far as what's currently existing going south, it dead-ends as it's currently shown. So, I don't know what a future variation of development might look like. Um, but I will say that the code is very explicit that we don't allow development on slopes over the, more than 25 percent. And as you saw in that previous drawing, that slope connects pretty closely to Rolling Hills Drive pretty quickly. In fact, it's interesting, if you look at the county, um, plats and the, the city zoning map, you'll see three lots that have been never developed. My theory is because that slope is so aggressive that they're not developable as they currently stand.
We have to access Firebreak Road through the property owner's property, is that?
No, you.
I mean, from what I, I saw on the parcel map.
You take a right-hand turn.
There's a dirt road right there that continues off of the house.
Is it completely out of that property, or is there?
It, it goes through, yeah, it goes through the property, then up.
The private property owner's property.
You think it's out of it, Dave?
I believe the street is part of this right-of-way.
We're not giving up that right-of-way. Are we giving up that right-of-way?
Again, to be clear.
It's right there.
This right-of-way here is what we're talking about from that point over to that bulb. This is all new development area that's not currently there. So, what's happening, as I was saying earlier, is when we get heavier rains, this is sloped this way. And so, a lot of the dirt and gravel and water, for that matter, comes in here. It makes a big mess of mud and dirt and rocks here. Then our public works team is going up and having to clean frequently after a large storm cycles. Not to mention, this also gets washed out and becomes less navigatable. So, this improvement is actually, from the street's perspective, the street, uh, department or street, I guess, subdivision of the public works department. This is actually solving that problem and also helping public works not to have to manage and maintain the stormwater issues that come onto that property. So, that trade there, if you want to look at it in that perspective, of that vacation, en, enabling this is actually, uh, could be seen as a benefit to the efforts of public works and what's going on with that, that mess.
I just don't want to lose access to the Firebreak Road in any way, shape, or form.
Well, they go, again, they go this way, and then you go up to Firebreak Road that way.
But we're going through that property to get to the Firebreak Road.
But if we're having to build to private property, we could be cut off.
Well, to be clear, this is private, this is all private property, even from here.
So, what I'm saying is if we vacate this, can we get a trade and have them trade a right-of-way to, or to the Firebreak Road for residents? I mean, this is something that I'm, I'm not so keen on that the, the whole of the bulb down at the bottom is not.
This, this is private property, so to answer your question, people would already be going through private property to get Firebreak Road, where they'd go this way, I guess, is my point to, to your comment. It's already happening, that trespass, is what I'm trying to communicate. So, if anything, to your point, it'd probably be better to identify that access more formally, because either way, you're, you're trespassing, in theory, to get up to Firebreak Road.
Correct. So, that's something that I think we should actually be addressing before we vacate.
And, and again, I don't know how to talk to that without having the applicant come up with that, because that's a different issue than the vacation that's on the table before the board.
It is.
And if this isn't vacated, then do they not have any buildable lots?
Uh, again, I don't, I don't know how to speak to the applicant's interest. The city was actually the one that asked the applicant to do this in order to resolve the, the access to the knuckle. That was actually, uh, directive as we went through the subdivision process. The applicant isn't necessarily asking for this vacation, absent the city requesting this vacation because of the issues with the tee. Another issue that's come up is the snow plowing. And again, maybe I should have Dave or Mike come up, where this is getting into a lot more of the public work conversations on this. But the snow plows right now had to go up there and plow the tee. This actually gives them a better ability to go up and do a turnaround and come back down the road than the currently is established with the tee up there. So, there is also an issue with the, the snow plow.
So, we instigated this?
The, the city was encouraging the applicant to do this.
Yeah, there are a number of issues, I think, which Mike just mentioned, that it's still a public road for however many feet, um, from the bulb. And so, that has to be snow plowed. And then the other issue that was problematic is you can't really get a driveway off the end of a street. You're supposed to come off the street. Um, and so, by just saying, okay, fine, the access is off this, um, new bulb cul-de-sac, it, it solves that issue as well and provides more, uh, privacy, because that's not a public right-of-way. And they tried to try and have it work with a public right-of-way there, but there's just not enough developable flat land within that.
So, does counsel need to hear from other staff, public works, before we go, go to the applicant? Or do you have more questions about, as well, for Mike, uh, Mike and Lisa before we go to the applicant?
Final comment is that this vacation is not necessarily required for their development. From the staff's perspective, we just think it's a good idea to get an area where we can turn around and say, that's not for us to plow.
So, they don't need that to develop?
No.
So, you could deny this, staff just thinks it's a better way to do it, but you could deny it, and we'll figure out how to get a private lane. And likely, they could do a private lane, we have allowed that in other areas.
Okay, so, so to Brian's point, I'm just looking at the Davis County property ownership, and he's saying, you know, there's this little tiny little section to access the Firebreak Road. It's the same owner, it's just to the east and the south. Just a little chunk. I mean, is that, would you feel better if we had access to that that wasn't private property? Is, I mean, is that something we can work out with them?
Again, I don't want to speak too much for the, the developer, but I will say, um... There were times during the conversation.
You have a big, long pointer if you need to get that.
Yeah. That, that will help. There were times during the conversation where the applicant has shown a couple of times, they do have some property here.
Yes.
That's kind of orphaned, and they had talked about, maybe that could be a good spot for even a future, um, like, trailhead access that the, the city, that they would be willing to, I think, deed to the city. Again, I, I would rather let them talk to it, but maybe along with that deeding, we could, they, they might be open to talking about as well the road connectivity connected to that if they were to deed over that parcel. So, maybe that would address some of the commentary. But again, I'd rather the applicant talk to that than I. But that had been brought up in conversations as we had looked at the subdivision.
Is there any rush for us to do this?
The applicant's very motivated.
Do we have time to table it and get the applicant here so that we can talk?
The applicant is here, Mr. Ergile is right there.
Okay, great, then we can talk to them now.
Yeah. But they are motivated. Again, this has been kind of spurred on by the city for the vacation, and they've gone through the process to get here. Um, otherwise, they would have probably tried to move a little faster with some of their actions, so.
I don't, I don't have an issue with what we're doing, but I do like the idea of making sure that we have, we've talked for years about making sure that we have access to Firebreak Road. We want to make sure that we maintain access at as many points as we can. But I think it's, I think because they do own that section, it's worth having, like, a discussion about.
Dave is stating that, that all the, uh, Firebreak Road is on different property owners along the whole length of it. As it is, it's actually not a public access way. So, that's something to think about as well, as we are talking about access to Firebreak Road. Basically, by use of it, you're theoretically, I guess, trespassing or using private property the entire length of it, I think is the point.
So, could somebody close it off?
Yeah, that's a good question.
So, we have encountered concerns with this as they've tried to do maintenance along Firebreak Road and different things like that, where there are property owners that have, I guess, threatened or really pushed back against a lot of people accessing it. A lot of it was out of frustration for, uh, people getting off of the trail and using their property for their own recreational purposes. From my understanding, they're not able to completely deny access, at least to, like, the emergency vehicles and that. If it were to be closed, it could be too recreational, but I think they'd be up against a pretty big, uh, riff. This is my understanding from past things, we've tried to do, uh, work with Davis County Public Works and that to, to maintain the road across.
Is there, I mean, are we, maybe we're talking about something that's really the counties?
This is in, within city boundaries.
Okay, yeah, you're right, I can, yes, you're right.
There are some portions of Firebreak that are non.
But this one is.
This one is, I can see it now that you say that.
Yeah, that purple line, do you know?
I just, I, I'm just thinking, I, I mean, we may just be way beyond what we need to be doing here, but I, I do think there is some benefit in discussing.
I think Brian brings up a good point.
Accessibility to that Firebreak.
If the applicant and the owner is willing to deed off that small southerly triangular portion off the city, that would be seen as a very gracious act. And I think staff has done a good job identifying an issue as it relates to our public, uh, Works Department, trying to keep our streets manageable and, um, and as Lisa's noted, there's private property rights that would not impede them to develop it anyway. So, I think it's, staff's done a good job of managing relationships and having amicable, um, approach to it.
And I will also note that the property owner is on Zoom as well to represent their interests should they want to add their commentary to it, that their applicant says later.
All right, should we get the applicant up here? If you want to say something. Identify, uh, your name and where you're from, just for the record.
Well, Scott Ergile, Leighton. As Lisa mentioned, our initial plan was not to do anything over on this side of the development. But it was, uh, strongly encouraged by the city to solve some issues, and it does help, uh, with some access, uh, challenges that I feel like we could have overcome. But, um, that we felt like going through this process is, is, uh, having this turnaround is a benefits the city, too. There has been discussion about, you know, remnant pieces of parcel and, and, and what to do with that. I feel like the property owner should have some say in, in that, and, because I, I don't know that I feel that it's a good idea to tie that to the vacation, if that's really kind of a fair thing where this is something that we're doing that we don't, didn't really have to do, we're being asked to do. The access going up to the south and around is, has been the access to the Firebreak Road for decades. Probably has prescriptive right, just like going up to the B and, and things like that. So, that access is not going to get shut down. That's the access that the, that the public works uses to get to your water tank. That's the access that Weaver Basin uses to get up to their, um, their reservoir. The, um, the hashed lines that come across there actually continue on. That's Weaver Basin's easement. So, the access is actually on Weaver Basin's easement, where they have right to maintain and, and their road. So, um, this road's not ever going to go away.
Questions for applicant?
So, one lot down at the bottom of that, is that what's going to happen?
One lot will be accessed off this cul-de-sac. One lot will be accessed off of that.
Thanks, Susan.
Yep.
So...
All right, no further questions for applicant. Uh, let's go to the, uh, public hearing portion of this. Uh, and obviously, when we come back out of public hearing, there's, there's, you can ask applicant and staff more questions. So, this is a public hearing on the public street and right-of-way vacation, uh, the north portion of Rolling Hills Drive, 350 East Rolling Hills Drive. So, that public hearing is, is now open. If you're inclined to comment, just need, uh, just state your name and where you're from. Anybody online commenting?
Nope, I'm answering.
That's the property owner.
Okay, that's online, okay. Uh, seeing no comments on the, we will close the public hearing, uh, and we'll come back to further discussion on this. Obviously, no, no comment, so the applicant doesn't need to respond to any comment. But does, uh, council have further questions for, uh, the applicant or staff?
I, I just have one more. Sir, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Scott Ergile. Scott, come on up.
Have you had, nobody, as far as neighbors, came up to talk about this, I'm sorry. But have you reached out to any of the neighbors? Have you gotten any feedback as to how this development is going to be taken moving forward?
Uh, no, we haven't, uh, gone and talked to any neighbors. I know that, um, down on the north end, that, um, I, I believe the, uh, property owner spoke to the neighbor, uh, on the west side of the road, the first house in, and, and they were excited about having, uh, mud and debris not flowing down their street, which was addressed at this, uh, we're doing some storm rain improvements that will, uh, keep debris off the road and, and create a turnaround for snow plows and garbage trucks and, and greatly improve that, that part of the city.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant or, uh, staff? Seeing none, then I guess, uh, I'm ready for some type of motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the public street and right-of-way vacation request for the northern end of Rolling Hills Drive is located section between Rolling Hills Drive and 350 East with conditions one through seven in staff report with findings A through B.
Do you have a second to that?
I'll second that. I'll let you second, Spencer.
Okay, he's deferring for the record, uh, councilman summarizing at the second. Further discussion? If not, let's vote. I'll start with, uh, to my left, with Councilman Hayman.
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously, thank you. All right, let's go to, uh, thanks for coming, Scott. And thanks for the honor for joining online. Uh, let's go to the amendment to final subdivision plat approval at Centerville Corporate Park, uh, at 500 North Marketplace Drive. So, uh, any sort of fill-in for us on this, Mike or Sydney, at, at all, on this?
Um, I've got this one, Mayor.
Oh, you got it?
Counsel, yes.
I didn't see your name on it, sorry.
This one sort of came through me.
Sure.
Uh, back in January, the city council approved a final subdivision plat amendment for the Centerville Corporate Park, just to move a lot line, um, for Lot 201 and Lot 1. And again, staff was requesting that they do a plat. They could have just done a lot line adjustment, but we liked the plat because it, you know, provides future owners those access points as well as all of our easements. So, again, staff requested, and the developer went through that whole process. As part of that process, um, the applicant had actually proposed and said, hey, we want some amendments to these grant of easements, and, you know, as we go forward with the parking structure and referring to the correct lot, amended lot numbers. So, since the RDA was approving those, the RDA has already actually approved the grant of easement amendments. But in our, um, motion for the plat amendment, we said that the applicant... said that the applicant shall submit these amendments to the grant of easements and that the, the amendments to the grant of easements shall be recorded prior to or concurrent with the plat. And the applicant has mentioned that it's, we actually have to go to Chick-fil-A and other owners, um, within the development to get those grant of easements signed and that that's going to take some time and they do have some time restrictions. Um, so my point was, it really wasn't a requirement, you know, I'm not sure we could say, hey, these have to be amended. Um, and again, I, I don't think we should hold up recording this plat just for those. They need to be amended, but again, they didn't have to come with a plat amendment and we likely would not have made this a requirement if the applicant hadn't brought up the proposed amendments. So staff is just recommending that we approve their request to eliminate the second sentence from condition number 10, which states that the amendments to the grant of easements and restrictions shall be recorded with the Davis County Recorder's Office prior to or concurrent with the recording of the amended plat. Now, the downside is Chick-fil-A says we don't want to sign these, but again, in my opinion, they're not substantive changes, um, to, to those amendments and we'll just have to work with all of them as the RDA is an owner in that, um, that subdivision. So we could be coming back to you if, if Chick-fil-A has some issues with those. Um, I haven't had any discussions with them yet, but, um.
But between the RDA and the applicant voting profile, we could circumvent Chick-fil-A, as I recall, the discussion from the previous meeting, is that right?
So, and, um, a representative of the applicant, Michael Petrogiorgis, here for LLC. So if, if you want to allow him some time as well.
Sure, come on up, Michael. Good to see you again. Did they offer, did, did you get offered a piece of candy?
I did, thank you.
Okay.
I took one.
Come on, make sure we didn't, uh, short you.
So thank you also for adjusting the agenda. I do appreciate it. Um, you know, it's really just a technicality issue. We've sent the documents to Chick-fil-A. I don't know if they're going to have any objection to them. You are correct, we have the voting power to amend them anyway. But part of the reason for the boundary line is because we want to be in a position, if we choose to do so, to be able to sell the second building that is not our corporate office. And so we just don't want to have that boundary line held up indefinitely if there is an issue. So I, I agree with Lisa. I, I never saw those as directly tied. We were just trying to accomplish multiple things. That's really the nature of the request is that we can get that boundary line adjustment recorded and then continue to work with Chick-fil-A to get the other documents amended and file. Happy to answer any of the questions that there, the council has.
Thanks, Michael. Okay, uh, it looks like you didn't have it counted. Questions for Michael. Uh, any other, other questions for Lisa?
This would be accomplished simply by the recommended action by motion and then we'll just correct the, or revise the approved condition.
Do you need us to say the potential motion that's here on page three? It's reference to planning commission, but I assume that this is our proposed motion?
This was the, well, this was the prior motion.
That was in January.
On, on three, so I just gave that, I, I put that in the packet so you could see what you approved last time, but really all you're doing is amending that motion to eliminate the second sentence of condition number 10.
The second sentence?
So we need to make a motion to amend the approval?
Yes.
Okay.
But with the deletion of the second sentence of condition 10. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to we amend the conditions of approval, final subdivision plat for Centerville Corporate Park second amended as approved by the council on January 21st, 2025 with deletion of the second sentence of condition number 10.
Second.
Second, further discussion? Let's start on my right with, uh,
Aye.
First one.
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Michael for coming. Thank you for Lisa for your work on it. Okay. Ready to go back to, uh, item number two?
Number one.
Oh, yeah, item number one, sorry. Okay, we had Nate coming up here before and he got all the way to the pulpit, so, uh, I was about to, ready to turn it over, uh, to Nate. So Nate, go ahead.
Mayor, give me your account. Um, I prepared a short presentation for y'all tonight. Um, feel free to stop at any point, uh, if you have items that you want to discuss. And I've already put our coworkers on notice that they may be called up to help explain some things. All right. Um, so as Mayor mentioned, this is the, uh, presentation of our, uh, fiscal year 2026 tentative budget. Um, our proposed budget you're seeing here tonight, uh, for the next fiscal year reflects a balanced budget that shows significant progress towards funding key services provided by the city, including public safety, parks, transportation, culinary water, and drainage. Additionally, the recruiting, retention, and training of productive employees is priority to maintain knowledgeable qualified staff to maintain the high level of service expected by Centerville's residents and businesses. And finally, this budget provides the necessary funding to maintain and replace the city's critical infrastructure as well as its aging fleet and equipment. Uh, the adoption of the tentative budget makes the budget public and initiates a period of public comment. Once the tentative budget is adopted, it'll be available for review on our website as well as a physical copy here at City Hall. And please note that you may not ultimately agree with all the details of this budget as we discussed, but you can amend the budget before adopting the final budget in June. Uh, and there are also a few items that staff is continuing to work on to try to finalize numbers. And so staff may have some suggested changes during that time as well. We've seen this timeline before, but, uh, just to remind you that, and the public, that there are plenty of opportunities to provide feedback. Uh, you have a public hearing tonight as well as the, uh, public hearing for the, uh, final budget in June. Uh, if anybody has questions between now and then, they're welcome to call me or email, and I'll try to answer their questions. Um, so yeah, that's kind of the schedule that we're looking at for the month. Just a few, uh, citywide highlights that you'll see in all the different funds of this budget. Uh, the first is our employee compensation. Uh, we're recommending a 2.5% COLA increase, uh, which matches the, uh, CPI, uh, from December to December of, from '23 to '24. Um, and then we're also recommending a 2% merit that would be allocated by the department heads.
I want to stop you there. Does that mean the 2% allocated to each department, that the department head can allocate 8% to one person and zero to a few others? With that discretion, as we're, we're calling it?
Theory, yes.
So I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
I think that there needs to be a metric in place for evaluations and that 2% should be the max.
So, I mean, that, okay. So to me, that's a stepping grade. We don't have a stepping grade system here. We have a merit based. And there are times where two people could be performing the same job. One performs better than the other and one might get three and one might get one. And the department heads need that flexibility to, to reward or to increase the pay of those that are better performing than others. And there might be some who aren't performing well and they need a reminder. There has been nobody getting 0%, I should say, nobody's getting 8%. They only have so much money to spend and it's divvied up as they see fit. And none of them have been unreasonable requests and situated.
I think it's just a lot of, uh, we're allowing for a lot of this, uh, subjective evaluation at that point.
So there are evaluations in place that each department does to kind of discuss where they're performing well and where they're not performing well. So it's not this subjective, I like you better and there's favoritism involved. There is a, there is a criteria they've established within their department. And currently, we're working on a more citywide that, that would be, again, for, for our sake, from a citywide perspective, because each department does a little bit differently. We'd like to see one thing consistent. So we're working on that right now, but it's still not the subjective matter. It's still based on performance and that's the point of merit.
And if they don't have people that, uh, if they don't, uh, issue out all of those 2% merit increases, does that money ever get returned to the budget or to the?
Yes, there have been times where not all of the merit has been distributed and still goes back to the budget at the end of the year. It goes back into our funds if it's not used elsewhere.
Okay.
And also note that Brant has final approval on all the raises and so, uh, I think there would be pushback if I were to try to give it all to one employee. Which I think I have a department or two might, I've challenged and, and they've given me justification or explanation and, and there might have been a change or two, but ultimately I have a conversation if it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
The other item that we'll see citywide is our, uh, property and auto insurance. Uh, we're estimating a 5% increase. Uh, I haven't seen the final numbers on that yet, so that is still an estimate. Um, and then our, uh, medical and dental insurance has an estimated 7% increase, uh, in place right now. All right, moving on to our, uh, general fund, looking at our general fund revenues. The general fund, uh, has their primary sources of revenues, uh, from taxes. The first is property tax. Uh, in this budget, there is not a recommendation for a property tax increase. Um, and we will not receive our tax rate and, uh, with it, the new growth numbers until June. Uh, so we've left our revenue number as is for now, but that will most likely change in June. Um, and you can see that chart on the left there. Uh, that's the 2024 tax rates. So again, those will change next month, um, but that just kind of gives you an idea of where Centerville falls in line with the rest of the county.
Our rate will decrease under this budget because we haven't changed our nominal property tax, tax amount, correct?
If our values, property values have increased, then our tax rate will decrease.
We don't know if they've increased.
Yeah, that's true.
So if our property values have decreased, then we may see an increase in taxes?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, Nate, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this for, can, I, I missed it or I lost it in my head. We'll receive new growth in June.
Yeah, so the county does not give us our-
That's what you're talking about just now, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what that statement meant.
Yeah. So, uh, just as a reminder, the way property taxes work in Utah is that the city or taxing entity receives the same property tax revenue, the dollar amount, year after year, unless there is new growth. Or unless the taxing entity goes through the truth and taxation process. Um, so right now where we don't have a, uh, property tax, uh, recommended or included in the budget, uh, the only chance for new property tax revenue would be new growth. We don't know what that will be, uh, until we get the numbers from the county. They're dead June 8th, which makes it a little difficult to budget. Uh, but yeah. Sales tax, we have left it the same, uh, as the current year at 5.5 million. Um, I think that's right about where we're going to fall into in this current fiscal year. And then we made a couple of changes to our, uh, franchise taxes. The, um, power we increased by 50,000 up to 600,000. And the natural gas, we increased by 75,000, um, just to reflect the actual amounts. All right, the next slide. Uh, continuing with revenues. Uh, since the budget retreat, we have increased the Justice Court revenue. At the budget retreat, we had it at 320,000. We've increased it to 350, uh, just based on, uh, year-to-date actuals and where we're estimating it's going to end up for the year. And I do have updated citation numbers. If you want them right now, I can pass them out just to show you what the, just, what the citations have been over the last, so I created this little spreadsheet. So just to give you an idea of what's going on with police department and Justice Court and I don't necessarily want you to zero in on it right now.
And this is just a change from our budget retreat because we had $320,000 in our budget, correct?
Right, right.
And you'd also ask for the citation numbers.
Okay.
What's here. So this is taking Tammy's number from Justice Court. I created this spreadsheet to kind of give me an idea of how it's shifting over the years. So you have 2019, pre-COVID, and then COVID, and then post-COVID, so. But again, I don't necessarily want you to spend a lot of time on that one, but, uh, just, that's the information you'd ask for. But it helps justify the, the increase in the revenue, I guess, if I hand it out now. And then the other, uh, item to note and change since the budget retreat, the sale of fixed assets, it's now at 305,000. Um, this was in large part an error on my end. Streets had originally requested to replace a 10-wheeler, which meant we would have sold their old 10-wheeler for a hundred thousand dollars. And once we, when Brant and I cut that 10-wheeler from the budget, I failed to remove it from the sale of fixed assets. Uh, so I removed that 100,000, um, and then we, uh, added the $5,000 for the sale of the rifles the police will be replacing.
You didn't miss any purchases, you just missed, uh, the sale?
Yeah, so we removed the purchase of the new 10-wheeler, which meant we're not going to sell our old one. Um, and I just forgot to, I noticed during the budget retreat, I forgot to remove it. So we got it fixed.
That was, that budget item, was that the one that was 400,000 and dropped to 305?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm still scrolling.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm doing the same thing.
All right, on this slide, uh, this just shows a summary of our general fund expenditures and how they're allocated. Uh, you'll notice that about 40% goes to our public safety between police and fire. And then, uh, parks and public works make up about 25%. Um, so we'll go through a number of the highlights from each of these departments. Um, and some of these that all, items that will present are just highlights or some have changed since the budget retreat. Um, again, feel free to stop or call up other department heads to, if you have any questions. Um, but yeah. Uh, the first one we discussed in our work session that we changed the, uh, contribution from 10,000 to 1,000. Going on to administration, uh, just a few highlights that the marketing includes $30,000 for new branding. Uh, our newsletter has been requested to go back to the paper version, so we've increased it to 12,000. And then we are implementing a new risk management safety program and requesting $2800 for this program. Uh, and then we requested, uh, 25,000 in the website line for the, uh, website redesign.
What is the risk management safety? Is that going to do something for our breaks that we're-